9:30, I'm calling meeting to our Happy New Year, everyone. First item of business is adoption of the agenda. Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. Through you, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mayberry, resolved that the agenda be approved.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Does that sound different to everybody? Okay, though? Or? I know it sounds different to me, I just wanted to make sure it's okay. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Counselor Acioli.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, I do. I, Counselor Acioli, that's quite the echo, declare pecuniary interest related to items 5.13, 5.5, 8.1.3 on the open agenda for today because I own property nearby.
And have you given the forms to the clerk? Thank you. And then next item of business is adoption of the council minutes of the previous-
Sorry, Warden. I also have a declaration of pecuniary interest. I, Brian Petrie, declare pecuniary interest related to item 5.14, 5.6, 8.1.4 and the corresponding bylaw, which, and on the open meeting agenda, January 8th, because I own property in the downtown core that could be affected by the decision.
Any other declarations? All right, and have you got the paperwork to the clerk? Thank you. Then adoption of the council minutes of the previous meeting, Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Peterson, resolve that the council minutes of December 11th, 2024 be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And public meetings, resolution to go on a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act, Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Counselor Tate, resolve that Counselor rise and go on a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act and that the warden chair the public meeting.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Director Michaels, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Warden. The application before council is for draft plan of subdivision, create six blocks for 34 street fronting townhouse units in the village of Tavistock. The proposal would also create a new public road and a stormwater management block. The stormwater management block on this sketch is located in the southwest corner of the bottom left of the screen. The proposed street would end in a temporary cul-de-sac, which would be extended in the future once development occurs on the lands to the north, but for the interim, that will be a temporary turning circle. The 1.2 hectare subject lands are located the northwest side of Woodstock Street South and are in the south end of the village of Tavistock, and the lands are currently vacant. Surrounding land uses consist of the Optimist Park property to the southwest, commercial use to the north, multi-unit, multi-story development to the northeast, and then across the road to the south are low-density residential units, primarily single detached. The lands are currently designated for medium-density development, which already allow for townhouse type of development, so it's really the subdivision and then the accompanying zoning that are required in this case. The associated zone change application is proposing narrower lot widths and reduced setbacks to allow for a denser form of development in this case, so it'd be a residential type three with special provisions, and that's essentially going to allow these lands to be developed towards the higher end of the medium-density range, so with a street-oriented type of unit. So that's a narrow frontages and setbacks. Nine of the units would be in holding provisions for future servicing, since there's only servicing for the first 25-unit phase. Once the William Street Pumping Station upgrades are completed in 2027, that's anticipated there by the additional capacity for the remaining nine units. The stormwater management block will be zoned open space. In terms of the supporting studies, a number of technical studies were submitted for this development, TIS, archaeological study, planning justification report, and functional servicing, and the recommendations of those studies are included in the draft plan conditions and are addressed through the design of the subdivision. We did not receive any concerns through public circulation, and Township Council has recommended approval of the subdivision and endorsed the zoning in principle for this development. So it's the position of planning staff that this application is supportable from a planning standpoint, as it will increase the range and choice of units in the village from a residential standpoint. It's located close to community amenities and services and has an efficient use of the lands and services in this area. So in summary, we're recommending support of the subdivision, and that would be subject to the proposed draft plan conditions.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Not seeing any. Is the applicant here and did they wish to speak to their application, either here or virtually? Are there any members of the public, either here in person or virtually, who wish to speak to the application? All right, then, I guess we're on to 5.1.2, application for official plan amendment, OP 2022-05-8. Eric Gilbert to present.
Thank you. This is an application for official plan amendment to designate the site from low-density to medium-density residential to allow for a nine-unit multiple attached dwelling development. The subject lands currently have existing dwelling that was formerly used as a group home. The applicant's looking to renovate that existing building to have the nine units. There's a detached garage over here that would be demolished to make room for the required parking for the nine units. The requested zoning change, which was approved in principle by City Council, recognizes the reduced lot frontage on the northerly corner between Henry and Cedar Street, as well it permits, recognizes the setback of the parking area to Cedar Street. The development does provide all the required parking. Staff are supportive of the application as it complies with the PPS policies respecting redevelopment and certification within service settlement area, as well the proposal does comply with the official plan criteria respecting additional medium-density sites, as this site is located in close proximity to a number of schools in the area, it is relatively close to the downtown area, as well as the commercial corridor on Norwich Avenue, and staff recommend approval of the application.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Not seeing any. Is the applicant here and did they wish to speak to their application? Are there any members of the public, either here in person or virtually, who wish to speak to the application? All right. On we go then to 5.1.3, application for official plan amendment and draft plan of subdivision. Eric Gilbert to present again.
Thank you. This application isn't for official plan amendment and draft plan of subdivision, it's for an industrial plan of subdivision located at the north side of Dundas Street, Oxford Road 2, and abutting the east side of Highway 401. This plan of subdivision has six blocks for industrial uses, as well as a number of natural heritage blocks and buffer blocks, service commercial block that is located close to Highway 2, as well as a servicing block which will provide the, facilitate the extension of services under the 401 to serve this plan of subdivision, as well as the abutting lands. The abutting lands were draft approved, they're owned by the city of Woodstock for industrial subdivision as well, so the development of these two parcels is closely tied together. This parcel is approximately 90 acres in size, currently used for cash crop production. There's a number of certificate natural features, including wetlands and woodlands, that are present on the property and extend beyond the property. Access to this plan subdivision will be through the city's industrial subdivision. There's a through road that will connect to the east as well as to the north. Due to requirements from the Ministry of Transportation, no access is permitted from Highway 2 or Dundas Street. The official plan amendment re-designates the site from business park to traditional industrial for the areas in blue, re-designates it to service commercial for the block to the south, and then as a result of a number of EIS studies, both from this application as well from the integrated EA that the city did as part of the southeast Woodstock Secondary Plan, there's some refinement of the boundaries of the natural heritage features, as well as the boundary of the buffer areas that were recommended by the EIS to protect those natural features. As noted, the block eight is a servicing corridor, there's a high-level servicing design completed that identifies that this is the location, primarily due to MTO requirements, where the services will be extended from the west to the Teotihuacan property. This plan will be serviced through the city's industrial park. All of the sanitary and water services will come through the city's industrial park, and there'll be a pumping station to provide an outlet for these lands. So as noted, the development of this site and the city site is closely tied together, and the applicant's engineers and the city's engineering consultants have been working closely to ensure that the services and design and road locations are closely integrated. With respect to the redesignation to general from business park to traditional industrial, staff note that it can be considered to be appropriate. The lands have an excellent location, abutting Highway 401, in close proximity to Highway 403 as well for larger traditional industrial uses. The, although the lands weren't designated service commercial through the southeast Woodstock Secondary Plan, that was due to the lack of road frontage on Highway 2, but the applicant is providing access through an eternal street to those uses. As well, the service commercial block will serve as a buffer between the industrial uses on these lands to the existing residential uses to the south in the settlement of Eastwood. Staff recommend that holding provisions be included on the industrial blocks to ensure that no development occurs until the services are present, also to require appropriate noise studies to delineate the impact of the industrial uses, which are known at this time with existing residential development in the vicinity. Overall, staff are supportive of the applications, recommend the application to be approved subject to the noted conditions of draft approval. These implement the recommendations of all the technical studies, background work, and the integration and coordination required between the applicant and the city of Woodstock. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Counselor Petrie, Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden, through you to the planner. Just to clarify, the service commercial will have no exits or entrance off Highway 2?
That's correct. There'll be a one-foot reserve along Highway 2, and no road access. The closer road access will be to the east through the city's industrial park, to a proposed roundabout at Oxford Road 53.
Just to follow up on that, so traditionally, the highway commercial use would be because there's a highway there and those uses are there. How, just because I can't see the rest of the plan there, how much of a detour around from the highway is it to the service commercial area?
Through, Warden, the intersection is located approximately here, opposite 53, so it's not very far to go into the site from Oxford Road 2.
Any other questions on the report? Is the applicant here and did they wish to speak to their application?
Good morning, Warden, members of council, city staff, members of the public. My name is Michelle Harris, I'm a planning associate at Genin Walker Domes LTD. Eric has done a wonderful job in presenting the application and the merits of it, so I will not go over that, I'm just here to answer any questions members of council may have on the application.
Questions for the applicant from council? Not seeing any, thank you. Are there any members of the public, either here in person or virtually, who wish to speak to the application? Not seeing any. We will then go on to 5.1.4, application for official plan amendment, OP 24-11-6, Clark Commercial Shopping Center. Director Michaels. End.
Thank you, Warden. The application before council is for an OPA that is proposing to amend the site-specific service commercial designation on the subject property, which is located in the town of Ingersoll, to permit the establishment of a hearing aid clinic that would be limited to a size of 120 meters squared. The clinic would be a small component of a larger commercial development that's proposed on the subject property. Some of the construction for those units is already underway. This OPA is required to consider allowing offices and retail uses outside of the downtown area, and the purpose of that policy is simply to ensure that allowing such uses elsewhere does not negatively impact the planned office and retail function of the downtown and is compatible with uses in the area. Because much is the case for all of the policies in our plan, the downtown is to be the first priority for such uses, so the OPA process allows us to assess the impacts of any uses outside the downtown. In that regard, a retail market impact study was undertaken to assess the implications for the town, and that study concluded that the strategic location, complementary uses and neighborhood serving function of the site that the use is to be located on set it apart from other sites in the town, and the proposals for a single office use that is being specified and is limited in scale and is also part of a larger shopping area. So the conclusion was that this particular use on the site would not have a negative impact on the downtown, it would be compatible with surrounding uses. Further, it would not set a precedent for other uses and service commercial locations in the town. An accompanying zoning bylaw amendment has also been submitted, which would also articulate that use to be permitted and limit the gross leaseable floor area. No concerns were received in regard to the application, and Ingersoll Council did support the proposal at their December 9th meeting. So in summary, we're recommending approval of the application as it's consistent with both the PPS and our official plan policies, and we're suggesting, recommending that the attached OPA be approved.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Is the applicant here and did they wish to speak to their application?
Yeah, if I could just briefly speak to it.
Absolutely.
So can I share my screen?
I believe so. Did you talk to IT or staff about, yeah, we're seeing it now.
Okay, okay, great. So, good morning, everyone. My name's Hashim, I'm a development associate with Westo here, and I just briefly wanted to speak to the application. I think Michael did a good job in terms of just explaining just the gist of it. The context of the site is just that we were granted site plan approval back in August 2024 for the three buildings, which are currently under construction. Just in terms of tenants, we have the national tenants and then just neighborhood favorites, so your retail, your grocery, your fast food. The zoning bylaw amendment came about when in the bottom right building there, we had to, we were approached by a tenant for a medical office use, which is specifically the hearing aid clinic. That zoning bylaw amendment was just to permit it within the current special highway commercial zone. Ultimately, it was approved in December, and it was site-specific to be limited to a certain GLA, as Michael mentioned, and it was just a specific use, so it was the hearing aid clinic use. Now we're here for the OPA to grant the hearing aid clinic under the service commercial designation. So, just in terms of compatibility quickly, I won't spend too much time on this, it's just the PPS. The two policies just essentially are saying that planning authority should support the achievement of complete communities by accommodating a appropriate range and mix of land uses, housing options, transportation, employment, public service facilities, and other uses to meet the long-term needs of the community. Settlement area should focus on growth and development, land use patterns which efficiently use landed resources. The gist of that is just that essentially neighborhoods should be cohesive and mixed so that they basically allow residents to live, work, and play in the same area. The official plan service commercial designation supports diverse service-based and limited retail developments strategically located along major roads and highways to serve both local residents and travelers, right? Complementing rather than competing with the Ingersolls downtown core. The hearing clinic in itself is a very small-scale retail, and it supports neighborhood character of Hollingshead, that residential neighborhood to the north. It's not stealing or taking away, rather it's complementing the existing land use, and it's not stealing away from the downtown core's function. In terms of the zoning bylaw, again, this was approved, it was deemed that it was compatible with other uses in the special highway commercial zone, and it permits a wide range of commercial uses anyways, so that was that. The market impact study was a supplemental, supplementary report that was requested by staff, and the consultant was hired by staff directly, which basically did four tests in terms of, is it complementary, is it stealing away from the downtown core area, and does it have any negative influence in the surrounding area, and is there examples of other medical clinics being outside the downtown core? So it was determined that because the Clark Center is different from other service commercial sites in Ingersoll due to its strategic location in the south, near 401, it's complementing and it's able to support the Hollingshead neighborhood and the town's growth. Essentially, it wasn't, you know, it's not, it's allowing people to kind of move not away from the town's core, but alleviating some of the stress of just swarming towards its central core every time you need something. There are examples of other medical clinics located outside the central area, which the town permitted through approvals and just benefits the community, so we're not reinventing the wheel. And then ultimately, it is compatible with surrounding land use, including commercial plaza, the nearby residential, and it's not impacting the current function of the central area policy. So, in conclusion, just the town of Ingersoll approved the ZVA, planning staff is generally supportive of the OPA, and the market impact study, the summary is just that there's no significant impact to surrounding land use, town's functionality, and the existing clinics within the Ingersoll area. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the applicant? Are there any members of the public, either here in person or virtually, who wish to speak to the application? Not seeing any. Then, resolution to adjourn the public meeting, Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvezzi, resolve that council adjourn the public meeting and reconvene as Oxford County Council with the warden and the chair.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. 5.3, consideration of report CP 2025-02. Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, resolve the recommendations contained in report CP 2025-02, titled Application for Draft Plan of Subdivision, SB 23-03-2, 282 5085 Ontario Inc., be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Just like to record my comments. I like the density of this application. I like the fact that it's infill, and these are the type of homes I think are going to be needed in the village, so I wholeheartedly support this application.
Anyone else? Council, Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. I too want to echo those comments. I think it's amazing that we're going to see the upper ends of the medium-density spectrum within a small urban area, and I think that's a great sign for the future, and certainly that's something that I can support.
Anyone else? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. 5.4, consideration of report CP 2025-03, Councilor Martin.
Moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Schaefer, resolve that the recommendations contained in report CP 2025-03, titled Application for the Official Plan Amendment, OP 22-05-8, for 1000049811, Ontario Inc., be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 5.5, consideration of report CP 2025-04, Councilor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Palmer, resolve that the recommendations contained in report CP 2025-04, titled Application for Official Plan Amendment and Draft Plan of Subdivision, OP 23-11-8, and SP 23-06-8, 272 9902, Ontario Inc., be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Somebody, oh, he's coming back. And 5.6, consideration of report CP 2025-05, I have this as Deputy Warden Petrie, but of course it can't be, so did something, Councilor Mayberry.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Gilvasey, resolve that recommendations contained in report CP 2025-05, titled Application for Official Plan Amendment, OP 24-11-6, Clark Commercial Shopping Centre, Inc., be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And no delegations, presentations, and therefore no consideration thereof. Consideration of correspondence, Councilor Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded, Councilor, Deputy Warden Petrie, resolve that correspondence, items 7-1 and 7-2, on the open meeting agenda of January 8, 2025, be received.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. 8.2, Public Works, 8.2.1, PW 2025-01, Amendments to Bill 212, Reducing Gridlock, Saving You Time Act, 2024 Environmental Registry of Ontario posting. Acting Director Gross, would you like to highlight anything for council before I ask them for questions?
Thank you, Warden. Nothing further to add.
Questions from council on the report? Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Accione, resolve that the recommendation contained in report PW 2025-01, titled Amendments to Bill 212, Reducing Gridlock, Saving You Time Act, 2024 Environmental Registry of Ontario posting, 0199266, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Certainly, this one is concerning, as I think we all know, the intention of this move was to address issues in Toronto, but it's now having far reaching out into all municipalities, including ours, and as we try to implement our active transportation and cycling plans, it certainly have issues of that, so I appreciate staff's time to be able to put Oxford's perspective in, and hopefully that will be taken into consideration, although it's already been kind of put through. But hopefully that will, when it's aptly implemented in regulations such, that it'll be taken into consideration, and it won't cause too much headaches here.
Anyone else? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.2.2, PW 2025-02, Tavistock New Well Class Environmental Assessment Study, Notice of Completion, Acting Director Gross, is there anything you'd like to highlight?
Thank you, Warden. I'll defer to Manager Donford.
Questions from council on the report? Councilor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Gilvasey, resolve the recommendations contained in report PW 2025-02, titled Tavistock New Well Class Environmental Assessment Study, Notice of Completion, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Councilor Schaefer.
Yes, thank you, Warden, through you. Again, this is, I think it's a great plan for the village. We currently have three wells that are all located in the same spot, so as you can imagine, if there's ever a contamination issue, that could wipe out the entire supply for the village. So what's great about this plan is this well is located quite a ways from those. It provides some more supply that we need and also supplies some storage that they need as well. I know there was some concern expressed by a neighbor regarding this, and I'm trusting that the staff will take their concerns into consideration when they get into the design stage of this plan, but I'm in favor of it.
Any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.2.3, PW 2025-03, William Street Sewage Pumping Station Class Environmental Assessment Study, Notice of Completion, Acting Director Gross, is there anything you want to highlight there?
Thank you, Warden. Again, I'll defer to Manager Donford.
Questions from council on the report? Councilor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Accione, resolve the recommendations contained in report PW 2025-03, titled William Street Sewage Pumping Station Class Environmental Assessment Study, Notice of Completion, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Councilor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden. Clear message of the urgency of this was just the 34 townhomes that we just approved. Only 25 of them can be serviced with the situation with the current pumping station. So this upgrade is really needed, and as well, any ARUs that are being considered that feed into this pumping station now can't be considered until this is rectified as well. So there's another reason why this is an urgent upgrade that I fully support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. I think this and the last report speak well to the investments needed within, again, the small urban area. Obviously, Tavistock's going to be a very busy place in the next little while, and certainly going through the proper studies to make sure that that happens accordingly is a good plan of action. So certainly can support that, and it's good to see that the investments will be taking place to create capacity for the next planning period to have increased growth and by looks of a good density within that region.
Any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.3, Paramedic Services, 8.3.1, PS 2025-01, Purchase Award Ambulances, Chief Hall, is there anything you want to highlight for council?
Nothing to add.
Questions from council on the report? Councilor Mayberry.
Just, thank you, Warden. Just one quick one. I'm just wondering, are these hybrid ambulances, or are we back to just straight gas or diesel?
These are straight gas. The hybrids that we had previously were aftermarket. That company is no longer in operation.
Any other questions on the report? Councilor Accione.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Schaefer, resolve that the recommendations contained in report PS 2025-01, titled Purchase Award Ambulances, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Deputy Warden Petrie.
In discussions with staff, with the CAO, and in the report, it's concerning that there is only one company that can produce the ambulances that we need for Ontario, and certainly right now they're being bought by a US manufacturer. So that inability to have competition to meet the requirements is concerning, certainly something that I'm sure all ambulance services, paramedic services within Ontario are sharing with those responsible, and I don't know what can be done, but it's certainly a concern that we don't have the ability to have choice. As Counselor Mayberry brought up, we used to have an option to have hybrid to meet our green fleet goals, but now that's not something that's being offered, so that's a challenge. And certainly, every time we have less competition in the market, it means that we're at the mercy of one supplier, which means their costs are not in control, to be able to be under control, and our paramedics may not receive the equipment that they need or would desire. So that's a concern, certainly supportive of this, but hopefully to see some changes in that market. There's obviously some opportunities for others to come into it.
Anyone else? Did I get you to read the motion already, Councilor Mayberry? I honestly can't remember. Yeah? Jerry? Thank you. Apologies. It's been a while. It's been a while, right? Like, anybody else? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4.1, CS 2025-01, Oxford County Anniversaries, Director Bougner, is there anything you would like to highlight in that report?
Yes, just briefly. Thank you, Warden. This report is presented to council as a bit of a reminder to what we informed you of through the 2025 Business Plan and Budget Process, of a trifecta of anniversaries that are coming together in 2025 related to Oxford County, the first being the County of Oxford, 175 years since its incorporation, 50 years since restructuring, and then both the county archives and the county library are celebrating milestones in 2025, archive celebrating 25 years since its inception, and the library 60 years since the county library, or county library system was incorporated for the County of Oxford. So with all of that coming together, we've provided a little bit of detail, just to pique your interest in the report, and there will be a lot more details coming forward over the course of the year, and we will keep council informed accordingly. We also want to draw your attention to the displays in the lobby of the county administration building here. If you didn't have an opportunity to peruse them prior to coming into the council chambers, we certainly encourage you to do so on your way out. And also, we will keep the public well-informed through our social media feeds and our general contacts with them around the community. So if there's any questions on any more details or any information you request, both Lisa Marie Williams, our CEO, Chief Librarian, and Liz Demash, our Coordinator of Information Services and Oxford Archivist, is, are both present in the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Councilor Mayberry. Is there any discussion? Councilor Gilvasey.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Just a comment that it was a very informative report, and I enjoyed reading the history. Thank you.
Councilor Martin.
I'll echo that, Warden Ryan. I enjoyed reading it until I realized that 50 years ago, I thought was a really long time, and then I realized I was in kindergarten and really felt old when I read this report. But there is a lot of really good information. People in general, I find, have a lack of understanding of how our system came into being, and so I hope that people get the opportunity to read this history over the next year and learn a little bit about how Oxford County came into being. But yeah, 50 years. Felt good.
Anyone else? I was transfixed this morning when I got here, and I walked past the little display there, and I stopped and I read every one of them. I'm a sucker. I'm a sucker for museums and anything like that, and those displays are really excellent. If you haven't looked at them, I really encourage you to pause and read through them. They're great little highlights, and I'm really looking forward to, as the year goes on, seeing the highlights in those sort of fleshed out with further detail as the year goes on. And I'm really hoping that, I think our Oxford County staff are collaborating with area municipal staff, but really I would just encourage all of us to go back to our area municipal staff and highlight that opportunity to partner with the county and all the archives resources and library resources and really big this up, because as Councilor Martin said, I think it's a great opportunity. An anniversary like this draws attention to things that people wouldn't normally pay attention to, which I think is a good thing if they pay more attention to government, frankly, anywhere in the world in 2025. Anybody else? Councilor Mayberry.
Well, just to remind people that while Councilor Bernia Martin was suggesting that she was in kindergarten, some of us, and I won't mention any names because I don't want to point at Councilor Palmer, we were here for most of those events. In fact, I think he was here for the 125th, but anyways. And in fact, because we were there, we remember it better, and we, in fact, celebrate it as well. Thank you.
Anyone want to try and trump that? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4.2, CS 2025-02, 2025 Interim Levy Bylaw, Director Bougner, is there anything you want to highlight there?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Questions from council? Councilor Gilvasey.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Martin, resolve that the recommendation contained in report CS 2025-02, 2025, titled Interim Levy Bylaw, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Unfinished Business, 9.1, PW 2024-44, Curbside Collection Contract Award. So, just to bring everybody back to where we actually left off, so we understand procedurally where we're at before we get into this, the, there was a resolution, a motion on the floor. I'm just hunting here for it. Yeah, the motion that was on the floor was moved by Martin, seconded by Gilvasey, resolve that the recommendations contained in report PW 2024-44, titled Contract Award, Curbside Waste Collections and Organics Processing, be adopted with the exception of recommendation number three regarding two-bag limits. And then there was a amendment put forward to that motion that, by Councilor, now Deputy Warden Petrie and seconded by Councilor Palmer, that the motion be amended to include automated cart collection as part of the contract. And that motion, that amendment, was deferred. So procedurally, that's where we sit right now, is considering an amendment to the motion, and that's where we start off now. So, having deferred it, Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. With the permission of the seconder and council, I would like to rescind the amendment that was put forward at this time.
Does the seconder agree with withdrawing? Okay, so thank you. Went through this with the clerk yesterday, our procedural bylaw, because wanting to respect the authority of council, once a motion is moved and seconded, it is in the hands of council, not the mover, not the seconder, not the chair. So we went through that, and the procedural bylaw says in section 9.5.1, under question on the floor, after a motion is stated by the chair, it shall be deemed to be in the possession of the council or committee, but the motion may, with the permission of the council, be withdrawn by the mover and seconder at any time before the question is put or any amendments made there too. So that sounds all fine, except what does the permission of council look like, right? Normally, the permission of council is a majority of us put our hands up for a thing. So this is a gray area, in my opinion. I think going forward, we should look to change that somehow. What does the permission of council mean, or define it that the mover and the seconder can just withdraw it without permission? Something like that. Anyway, it should be defined, but my ruling today would be, given the gray area, that the mover has said they want to withdraw it, the seconder has said they want to withdraw it, if I don't see anybody objecting to it, I'm going to allow them to withdraw it, and the amendment is then off the floor. I'm not seeing anybody objecting to it. So therefore, that means we would be back to the unamended motion on the floor, is moved by Councilor Martin, seconded by Councilor Gilvasey, resolve that the recommendations contained in report PW 2024-44, titled Contract Award, Curbside Waste Collections and Organics Processing, be adopted with the exception of recommendation number three regarding two-bag limits. I'm going to start this off back again and say, Councilor Martin, as the mover, do you wish to speak to that?
Thank you, Warden Ryan. I do. So this recommendation is supporting scenario number So this recommendation is supporting scenario number five, which I continue to support during our deferral. Took a lot of time to talk with county staff, city staff, staff with SWACS, other counselors, and while scenario five refers to a six-day collection period, that isn't necessarily my own personal preference. I like a five-day collection period, but I'm, I'm, I'm ready to meet the challenge of change. Just because it isn't my own personal preference, I do believe that scenario five on a six-day collection period is what is financially best for, for the County of Oxford, but it is also what will be ideal for the long-term lifecycle of our landfill. So currently, right now, we have 27 to 32 years left in our landfill. If curbside separated organics is as successful as I think it can be, we could see an extensive expansion or extension of up to 20 years of that landfill. And that landfill will take about $40 million in today's dollars to expand or rebuild, and so this gives us an extended amount of time to build up those reserves, focus on that asset management, while also diverting organics from our solid waste stream. So I fully, continue to fully support the motion and look forward to further comments and debate from council.
Counselor Gilvasey is the secundar.
Thank you. I certainly support the no-bag limit, but I would say I'm torn on the rest. Over Christmas, the waste collection days fell on Tilsonburg's pickup days, and seemed to be mass chaos, just having one different day for two weeks, moving it from a Wednesday to a Saturday. They, also, they had very, they had difficulty picking up the waste because there was an extended period of time, normally the seven-day period to the 10-day period, and they had so much waste, they were working well into the evening because their trucks were filled. With regards to the organics, I know that there's pros and cons for both. An extension of the landfill is great, but on the other hand, what you're diverting from the landfill is actually the one thing that breaks down, the organics. The bigger problem is all the other stuff we're putting in the landfill, which I maintain will continue to be a problem, and the only way to actually get rid of it is to incinerate it. I think I have spoken to several counselors, and I know that people have received advice from staff, but I also believe it is our role to represent our constituents, and I haven't talked to a constituent yet that wants a six-day cycle. And I know specifically in my community with 30% seniors, they don't have access to apps on their phone, you know, that is going to push out a reminder to them each week. So those are the concerns that I'm raising. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Warden. I'm actually glad that we deferred this to this time. I know what, it's a really big thing for all of us to decide in all our communities, and I know I put a little thing out on my social media to get some feedback from, from the residents of Blanford Blenheim. I went back over a lot of it afterwards and kind of come up with my own scenario. I'm, too, would prefer a five-day cycle. I find it more convenient, but in saying that, I have a hard time justifying the 1.7 million a year, and that's just the first year. What would it be? I look over 10 years, we could be talking 25 million or more in savings, so I have a hard time justifying that. I had somebody in the arena, and I've spoke to a few counselors about this, I had somebody at the arena kind of coming at me about the six-day cycle, and I asked them how they got to the arena today, and they said, well, it's, my son has hockey today. And I said, well, how did you figure out it's hockey day today? And he goes, well, I looked at my schedule. And that's when I looked at it, and I thought, same thing with me with my grandson, if I can figure out that I can go to the hockey of my grandson on a certain day, that I'll be able to figure out the other way. And that's the way I kind of look at it. Is there going to be days that I take my garbage out and go, yeah, nobody else has it? Absolutely, I guarantee every one of us here, it's gonna, it's gonna happen, but I just can't justify 1.7 million, especially the first year, just to have a convenience of the five day. So in that part. The other part is with the green bin. I had a lot of people that, that didn't want the green bin in my area. The reason they didn't want a green bin is because they use composters or whatever other means of getting rid of that. So that was a hard part for me to, to get by on. When I look at giving everybody a green bin, if you use it, the truck's going to go down your street anyway. So the, really, the only costing of that whole thing is that capital cost of a green bin. So that's where I was kind of, you know, I didn't want to put that, because any way you look at it, yep, it's coming out of reserves, but it's still taxpayers' dollars. So that's the one part, I'm not sure about the green bin for everybody. I think that's the way you got to go if we decide to go with this option. You give everybody a green bin, if they use it for something other than, than the green bin, so be it, as long as they're doing something to get rid of that, that green waste. So I, I'm glad we took the time to think about it over the holidays. I know a lot of us probably didn't think of it during the holiday time, but in the last week, I know I've spoke to staff as well, and other council members as well, and I will support option five. Thank you.
Counselor Atchoun?
Thank you, Warden, through you. This was a tough one, because I also was a big supporter of the five-day cycle that we're used to here in the municipality. The, I guess the change was speaking with staff, and I think county staff as well, for being willing to sit down and kind of look at the details and what that, 1.7 million, as Counselor Peterson talked about, how that adds up and the savings, and how that movement is far easier and simpler and a huge cost savings. With the changes of recycling coming, it's no secret, I have a lot of concerns. That's going to be unpredictable. We don't know when, how that's going to be picked up. That day is going to be changing. So at the end of the day, I feel we're all going to be looking at a calendar anyways to figure out what that new cycle's going to be. Why not make a change kind of completely in the system? Now is the time, and save a lot of money to do that, because organics is needed, at least, in my opinion, here in the city of Woodstock. It's been talked about for a very, very long time and is welcome. So the cost savings in mind, I'm certainly going to support option five with the six-day.
Counselor Mayberry?
Thank you, Warden. Obviously, I'm going to support the six-day. I think the thing that we sometimes forget is that in a six-day cycle, there's never been working on Saturday, nobody ever works on holidays. From an employee perspective, and regardless of whether they're Amterra employees or Woodstock or whatever, the idea that I never have to work on a Saturday again is actually very attractive. And I think that's something that, if we're worried about, you know, employee retention, telling them that they never get stuck with a holiday, now, some would argue, well, then I don't get holiday pay either, but in fact, at some point, they lose a day of time. So I think it's, I think it's a good move. The app that the county has for when your garbage is coming out, I get it every week. I get a little thing on the phone saying, don't forget, tomorrow's garbage day. I think it's pretty simple. If I can figure it out, I'm pretty sure the rest of you can. I would, however, like to make a slight amendment to the recommendations, and it would be, with your permission, seconded by Counselor Petrie, that number five in the recommendations, and further that Oxford County authorize early commencement of source-separated organics collection within the city of Woodstock and the township of Southwest Oxford, starting in 2026, including early procurement of green bins in 2025 and '26, to be funded from the landfill and waste diversion reserve. And I, I can speak to it.
Just first, so you said Deputy Warden Petrie seconded, and does the clerk have that wording?
Yes.
Okay, so then, as the mover, would you like to speak to the amendment?
So just to the amendment, we're in the same sort of position. Southwest Oxford would very much like to continue on with the garbage and now organics collection, and we're in the same position as, as Woodstock, that we are, in fact, we could switch almost immediately to pick up garbage and organics because we already have the split trucks. It'll be the county that we'll have to be waiting on rather than the, than either the city or Southwest Oxford. And the reality is that we could be, we could, the way it is now, we could, in fact, spend a year or more going up the road just picking up garbage and, and half of a truck, and so or two-thirds of a truck. And so therefore, we're kind of wasting all that time and energy when we could, in fact, be removing that material from landfill a year earlier. And so I think it, our cost will be exactly the same, or virtually exactly the same, and the, the ability to remove the organics a year early. It also might give us some sort of lessons on what did we learn in rural areas compared to urban areas and on organics collection? So I would like to see us start that earlier, and the township is prepared to move forward on it.
Deputy Warden Petrie is the secundar.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Given the facts that Counselor Mayberry presented, I have no problem supporting this. It makes sense for the same reason it makes sense for Woodstock, if they have the ability to do it. It's our goal to get that out of the, the stream, and so if that can happen, if there's room, and it can happen within the same, you know, window of cost, then I'm supportive of that.
Anyone else? I have a question for staff, or I guess first a question for the mover. It says to take the money from reserves to do that. Did it specify which reserve?
Sorry, Warden. It's from the landfill and waste diversion reserve. It's, it's the intent of the motion original, or the intent of the recommendation was to buy the green bins for the city of Woodstock, and I'm just suggesting that they may have to buy a few extra, and I, and I don't know, I would leave that up to Public Works to figure out how many they're buying in '25 and how many they're buying in '26, but it's all coming out of the reserve anyways. Thank you.
So question for staff, I'm not sure whether it's for finance or Public Works, but, so I know this is an amendment to the recommendation from staff, but I, I think my interpretation of it is that it's totally consistent with it, it's just adding containers for SWACS collection in addition to, to Woodstock organics collection. Is there any concerns from staff with that recommendation? I'm just wondering, because it was not the recommendation in the report. Either logistical concerns or finance concerns, I guess, is my...
Thank you, Warden. There would be some additional costs associated with organics processing, similar to starting early in Woodstock, but we would need to determine what those costs would be.
Anyone else on the amendment? Alls in favor? Opposed? That is carried. So then, back to the amended motion, and actually... Let's take five minutes.
Thank you, Warden. The amended motion reads as follows: Resolve that the recommendations contained in Report PW 2024-44, titled Contract Award Curbside Waste Collections and Organics Processing, be adopted with the exception of Recommendation Number Three regarding two-bag limits, and that the Recommendation Number Five be amended to read authorize early commencement of source-separated organics collection within the city of Woodstock and the township of Southwest Oxford.
So Counselor Mayberry and Deputy Warden Petrie, is the intention of your amendment is reflected accurately there? And Counselors Martin and Gilvasey?
Yes.
Not asking you for your vote on it. The wording is accurate? Okay. Any discussion? Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Warden, through you. I spent an exorbitant amount of time on this one over the holidays in my office, deep diving and trying to figure out, and that's probably why I asked for the amendment to be removed. why I asked for the amendment to be removed. This is a contract. This is a decision of council that affects every resident in Oxford County and affects multiple councils down the line. So I'll be honest, I don't think this is the best solution that could happen, but I think that this is the best option that we have right now. I do intend to do some work with council colleagues and bring forward some action items that to make sure the next council is in a better position to make a better position and give staff the tools to put out the best options available and give us the best chance to have the best competition available for the collection services. I got a little model on my ledge there. It's branded out in Oxford County at Decals. I do think that automated was the is the best system to go to. I think we're going to be at the end of this 2034 about 20 years behind. That being said, I do support the six-day collection route, given that it is it is it is the most efficient routing at this time. And I do believe that Oxford County residents are just like everybody else that have gone to it and they can adapt. And we will. I have the app on my phone now and I can't remember garbage day. So it's I think we can it'll be it'll be the same. Source-separated organics, I really appreciate Councilor Peterson's comments because I think that that is the way to go across the across the county. When we say rural, sometimes we think just gravel road, but you know, we have Tavistock, we have Norwich, we have Drumbo, we have, you know, all these these urbanized areas in the rural rural townships, Tempsford, that I think those serve those residents as well as every single one of them on a gravel road deserve the same level of service as everybody else. And it benefits those areas that as well of, you know, if we don't do that, then, you know, if we just have it in the quote-unquote urban areas, we're going to be having those increased costs of the landfill happen because those organics are not becoming out of the garbage. And I agree. If someone can do something with them, they want to compost using their garbage or their gardens and stuff like that, all the better be it. As long as it's not going into the landfill, that's the way to go. Certainly agree with Woodstock and Southwest Oxford. They have the ability now. They have the vehicles. They're ready to go. And it'd be a good pilot program to try to implement this. There will be a learning curve on this, of course there is. But when you look in the research, it doesn't matter what option you go with. To be successful, you have to have a great implementation program. And I'm hoping that's what we'll see come through is great education and for our residents and, you know, the time and effort put into the planning process to try to get the hiccups out of the way beforehand. And then there's going to be those hiccups, but we can all do our part to try to make sure that people know where to get the information. And things change. It's going to happen. And there'll be some bumps, but I think we can get through it. At the end of the day, you know, 2034 is a long way away, but it's not. And I think, again, this is the best that we can do at this point for the options that we have. And I look forward to working with everybody in the future to make sure that we're ready for the next one.
Anyone else? Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Warden, through you. I don't like the six-day cycle either. But when you look back, we just got through a budget session where very modest new initiatives, very modest FDE increase, and it was still pushing almost 9% levy increase. And I think it's a harbinger of what we're going to be facing down the road. These budgets are going to get tougher and tougher. So to ignore a million seven a year saving going to the to the six-day, I mean, that's $12 million over the life of the contract or more. I don't think that can be ignored. And I think I can live with a six-day cycle. Hopefully our residents can, knowing full well that it's going to extend the life of the landfill and it will save us some money compared to the current weekly system. So I will support the resolution.
Anyone else? Counselor Tate?
Yes, I won't be supporting the resolution. I agree with Counselor Gilvaze's comments. I appreciate the comments from staff, but we were elected by the people, not by the staff. And everybody I talked to, nobody wanted the six-day cycle. And a lot of people don't have the access to have, you know, notification when it's going to be on. I'm not sure where the 1.7 million keeps coming from because to go for the five-day with just urban pickup for the green, it's about $228,000 difference. I think the issue that we have is the green pickup all over the county. And as mentioned, that should be going into the landfill to break it down. That's what breaks down everything in the landfill. If we're going to start discussing every everything that we bring forward to county that we have urban and the rural at the same service level, we're going to go broke. So talk about budgets getting out of control, get out of control. Our we have people in Woodstock, they're paying over $10,000 a year in taxes, and this just keeps increasing it. So I don't agree with the green bin all across the county. I think that is unnecessary and it is a lot of money. And I don't think it's what the people want. I don't think they elected us for that.
Anyone else? Counselor Paul?
Yeah. I've learned over the past year that people can get used to almost anything. So I prefer five days, but six days will work as well. The green bins, like in my village in Norwich, is now fully serviced, has big lots compared to what you find in the towns and cities. But we're getting new infrastructure, new homes, and they will all be built smaller areas. They're going to need this green bins. So I'm supporting both issues, green bins and six-day.
Anyone else?
I fully support the motion on the floor. I think Counselor Tate raises a good point, you know, and certainly people in rural areas, people on the gravel road like myself, don't get the same service level as everybody else does, right? I mean, whether it's an area municipal service or a county service, you don't. And that's part of the deal, right? Sometimes you like that, sometimes you don't. I don't have a sidewalk. I don't have streetlights. I don't have a paved road. To me, those are features, not flaws. But some of my neighbors think they're flaws, not features. But I think when it comes to waste collection, there is the level of service that you experience at your curbside, but there's also the level of cost. Because I think what I think we sometimes struggle and sometimes residents struggle to remember is it doesn't end when the truck picks it up from the curb. That's the beginning of the costs that we incur. And so whether I use my green bin or not, every one of my neighbors benefits by there being a green bin because, as Counselor Martin said, we are diverting waste from our landfill. We're deferring the amount of time we have to before we even start. The cost of an EA for an expanded or new landfill, never mind the cost of an actual landfill, we defer that cost. It gives us more time to plan for it, more time to finance for it, more time to manage it. So I think countywide is the right thing to do for this. I certainly agree with what Deputy Warden Petrie said. A person living in the village in a subdivision in the village of Drumbo has exactly the same lived experience as a person living in a subdivision in the town of Tillsenberg. And why would they not get? They have no more ability to deal with their organics than anyone else. So I think we they should have the same level of service. And again, we all benefit from the diverting. So I'm in favor of the county-wide organics. When it comes to the six-day collection cycle, I think people have commented on that here. I think we can manage it. I think it's interesting, you know, we're struggling with six-day collection, but nobody suggested four-day. Would we like it more often? Would we like it daily? In other words, we know there's a limit to what we're willing to pay for, right? We know that, right? We don't we also don't want a system where we dump it all in one bin and somebody else sorts it out for us because we know that would cost too. So there is some kind of limit as to what level we're prepared to pay. And I frankly think, as Counselor Schaefer said, that with the budgets, the last two budgets that we've been through, this is a case where, you know, 1 million, 1.7 million, whatever, it's a percent of levy, a whole percent on levy. I think this is the efficiency in government that people are looking for. But when it comes to efficiency, it doesn't mean somebody else finds the savings. Sometimes we have to do it. And what we're going to have to do is get an alert on our phone that says today, you know, tomorrow is garbage day and put your garbage out. The other thing is, I think we should remember is that four years ago, every single Oxford municipality, including this council, voted no to a private landfill. A colossal amount of work was done on that by the town of Ingersoll, Towne-Tropezora, Southwest Oxford and Oxford County to get the ability to say no to that private landfill and to ultimately use that power to say no. And part of the reason that we said no at the time was that collectively we said burying our waste in a hole in the ground is not a viable long-term solution to waste. So we had a commitment through that struggle to zero waste. And part of achieving that commitment is to say we're going to have organics. We're going to separate that. And we're not we're not going to bury it in a hole in the ground and fill that hole up faster. So to me, this is consistent with, you know, our best practice with respect to keeping tax pressures low, respecting the environment, our commitment to zero waste, finding efficiencies in government for our residents. You know, am I going to love six-day versus five-day collection? Absolutely not. My daughter was giving me in my ear all over the Christmas holidays, "Don't do that, Dada. Don't do that" because her job is taking out the garbage and recycling. I'm going to hear it tonight when I go home. But at the same time, 1. whatever million dollars, however you want to assess it, is a lot of money. And if and if the county-wide organics component helps us to divert from putting our waste in the hole in the ground, I think we shouldn't forget that struggle that our residents went through. For any of us who were in elected office at the time, like that was a paramount issue at that time. And this furthers our commitment to addressing that. So I'm fully in support of the recommendation on the floor. I think this is the reality of government sometimes is picking the one that isn't your favorite one, but is the responsible thing to do. And I think that's where we're at today. Anybody else before I call the question? Counselor Gilvaze?
Thank you, through you, Warden. I have a question. It's probably for staff. Are there out clauses like so like this is going into a contract for a rather lengthy period of time and will be actually into the next council? And if, say, just something didn't work, are there options to renegotiate over that time period?
Through the warden, yes, like with any contract, there are options to to terminate the contract, although there may be penalties associated with that.
Anyone else? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Motions, there are none. And notice of motions, I will ask the deputy warden to take the chair. Thank you very much. Are there any notices of motions? Warden Ryan, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself, moved by Ryan, seconded by Mayberry. Whereas Oxford Council has previously adopted 100% housed commitment, housing-for-all plan, master housing strategy, and later this year will receive reports on a homelessness response strategy and a homelessness service center with a focus on transitioning people out of homelessness. And whereas our residents experience housing on a continuum from unhoused to emergency shelter, et cetera, all the way to market rental or ownership. And whereas in some cases, the need or opportunity for housing may change depending on varying circumstances, and in order to maximize the effectiveness of our previously stated policies, our staff need to be empowered to act on a range of housing and homelessness options and opportunities. Therefore, be it resolved that the entire county annual base contribution to the Affordable Housing Reserve be utilized to support the creation of various housing options across the housing continuum, consistent with all current housing policies and strategies.
Thank you very much. As this was received with the notice provision, it is debatable at this meeting. And I will ask that the warden asks if he would like to speak to his motion.
Thank you. I would. My intention here is I think when when council first came up the Affordable Housing Reserve and then expanded it, it was part of the master initial proposal of the master housing strategy. And and at the time, our focus was on affordable housing specifically. But I think I frankly think in hindsight, it was a mistake to be as restrictive as we were. But I think we've learned since then with the success of some of our transitional housing and some of the needs in emergency shelter, that in fact, we need to expand the potential use of those funds. So this is not suggesting that we add funds to that. Council discussed that at budget time and decided not to do that. This is talking about giving the flexibility of our staff to say if there is an opportunity or a need at a specific time that is the most appropriate to address a bottleneck. And in my mind, I'm picturing that housing continuum graphic that our staff have developed for us, you know, if they're identifying that the bottleneck is here or there's an opportunity to address something there, that I think that we should be empowering them to do that, whatever that looks like, whether it's affordable, transitional, supportive, emergency shelter, whatever the case may be, and spend it where it's going to be most effective. And I am confident that our staff would come back and tell us that that's happening and how it's going to be spent. We've seen that already where we've got reports from staff saying how they're going to allocate some of the 3 million annual funding to achieve four more units in a project. So council will be made aware of it. But what I don't want is for opportunities to present themselves or for staff to think that they can't explore opportunities without getting council permission. I'm suggesting to council that the most appropriate thing to do is give staff that expanded license to use that 3 million for anything in the housing continuum that's consistent with the policies that council has already passed.
Thank you very much. Counselor Mayberry is the second. Would you like to speak to it?
Just a quick comment. I would echo much of what the warden has just said. I think this is about encouraging staff to look at every opportunity and to use their professional judgment to in fact bring the opportunities forward that have the best return on investment, the best priority. And wherever that falls on the continuum, I don't I don't think that I'm in a position to determine, should we invest money in A, B, or C? I think that's something that I appreciate staff bringing forward. And ultimately, it'd be a council decision. We will vote yes, no, or anything on any proposal. So I fully support this motion.
Thank you very much. Just before we have further discussion, are there any questions, just questions of the the motion for clarification? Okay, no seen. And then further discussion? Counselor Martin?
Thank you very much, Deputy Warden Petrie. I fully support the motion. And for me, this motion gives staff, it allows them to be nimble enough to react with county budgeted dollars should any provincial or federal dollars come along, that within a fiscal year, it allows us to allocate, reallocate, and be nimble enough to do that. And so I fully support the motion. I agree with with the warden that when it was originally allocated specifically to affordable housing, our needs have changed dramatically since that original allocation. And so broadening up how staff can spend this money as needs arise, it has my full support.
Thank you. Counselor Acioni?
Thank you, through you, Deputy Warden. I just want to thank the warden for bringing this forward. I actually support this very much so. I know we talked initially a fair bit on this. I think staff are going to be able to do wonderful things looking at those bottlenecks. I have full faith that we can address those quicker in a timely manner and affect more lives. So I want to thank the warden again for bringing this forward.
Any further discussion? Seen none. All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. And no closed session. Sorry, any inquiries of staff from council? Not seeing any. No closed sessions and no consideration. Bylaws, Counselor Martin?
Sorry, may I request that bylaw 15.6, I believe, sorry, 15.5 be separated? Is there a big interest in the matter?
15.5. So that would be pulling out 6,702.5. So that would require Counselor Martin to modify your both of your motions. Okay, so we're going to do this slow to make sure the clerk has it and you're all good. And I see Counselor Acioni.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not sure which one it is, but I'm going to expect I have one of those as well for the same.
You know what I'm going to suggest? Let's take five minutes. I'm going to ask Deputy Warden Petrie and Counselor Acioni to huddle with Counselor Martin and the clerk and sort this out. So when we come back, we have clear wording and then we go forward. So let's take...
Thank you, Warden Ryan. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Palmer. Reserve that the following bylaws be read a first and second time.
Is there any discussion?
Do I leave any out?
All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Martin?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Palmer. Resolve that the following bylaws be read a first and second time. 6670-2025 and 6701-2025.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, and then, can we get them back in? Counselor Martin?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Palmer. Resolve that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading. 6696-2025, 6697-2025, 6698-2025, 6699-2025, and 6702-2025.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Martin?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Palmer. Resolve that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading. 6700-2025 and 6701-2025.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Warden Petrie. Resolve that council meeting of January 8, 2025 be adjourned until the next meeting scheduled for January 22, 2025 at 9:30.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed?